I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting for the City of Springdale for September 17th, 2025. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation, united by indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On this day, 238 years ago, delegates to the Constitutional Convention signed a bundle of compromises that became a blueprint for a stable republic. Today, 50 states and thousands of municipalities are carrying out that vision of popular sovereignty. May we, the elected officials of one of those municipalities, put our best efforts into continuing that vision of balancing order and freedom in a way that benefits all our residents and moves us closer to a more perfect union.
Thank you for that invocation. Ms. Boggs, if you please take role.
Mr. Gleaves.
Present.
Mr. Jacobs.
Present.
Ms. McFarland.
Present.
Ms. Sullivan Weiske.
Present.
Mr. Vanover.
Present.
Ms. Webster.
Present.
Mr. Anderson.
Present. Council in your packets, you've received the minutes for the September 3rd meeting, 2025. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Aye.
Any questions, corrections, or changes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved with seven affirmative votes. All right, moving on. Next, we have committee and official reports. We'll start with the Civil Service Commission. I know Mr. Coleman is not here. Is there an update from administration? Ms. I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Civil Service Commission did meet on September 4th. And the, all of the commission members were present, Mr. Coleman, Mrs. McNear, and Mr. Donegan. Also present were Mr. Yule, myself, and Human Resources Administrator, Ms. Edwards. After the disposition of minutes, we had a couple of reports, updates on our finance account clerk to hiring process, as well as our public works maintenance worker hiring process. Those are still pending at this point in time. We did not have any other new business, other than just some general correspondence relative to a probationary appointment, and really no other discussion. Our next meeting will be coming up on, not October 2nd. Yes, October 2nd at 2:00 PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Next, we'll move on to rules and law. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Finance Committee, Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee actually met just prior to this, our meeting, and we will be forwarding for consideration. Discussion was on compensation, council compensation. So expect for the first meeting in October that it will be, the information be included in your packet. And the plan then would be have two readings and vote at the second meeting. So that's what, what the plan is there. Also, general activities fund through August 31. The beginning fund balance was $8,150,023. And the revenues for August was $1,445,474. Expenditures were $1,909,113. And then general fund balance ending was $7,686,384. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you for that. Next, we'll move on to planning commission. Ms. Sullivan Weiske.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Zoning Appeals met August 26 in these chambers at 7:00 PM. We had one application from High Lift Off Road 271 Norland Boulevard, application number 20250861. The property located at that address is requesting the following two variances in conjunction with the proposed fence. Number one, to allow fencing to project past the front building line of the principal structure as required per zoning code section 153 dot 253 E5A1. That variance was approved with conditions, and those conditions will be met along with the fire department and the building department. Variance number two, to allow fencing to be constructed of chain look fence where wood, vinyl, wrought iron, aluminum, or other similar materials is required per zoning code section 153 dot 253 E5C3. That variance was also approved. Both variances were approved by a 7-0 vote, and again, all members were accounted for. That's all I have. Is there's anything else? If I might. Thank you.
Don't see anything. Thank you, Mr. Gleaves. Next, we have border health. Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Health resumed meetings following summer break last week. First thing included the Health Commissioner's report. We did have our first reading for regulation R1 2025, R2 2025, and R3 2025, which are a renewal of the license fees for food operations, public swimming pools and spas, and hotels and motels. We will have the second reading of those with a public hearing in October and a third reading in November. We did have a review of updates made to the Health Department Strategic Plan and Emergency Response Plan. Food program update included an update on Wawa with the opening date still temporarily, October 16th, as far as we know. Slick City and QT are both approved and under construction. Mr. Hyax on Route 4 has opened, and Smoothie King, which will be opening near First Watch, is in process and scheduled to open towards the end of November. They did have the Mental Health Resource Fair held in June that over 70 rubber, 70 residents attended. And we had representatives from multiple mental health agencies in the area. They will be doing suicide prevention, which is at the end of October. The Health Department will do a training, and then all of the city employees will do a training later in the year. And then wrapping up with the nurses' report, there was no narcin uses in June, July, and August. Vaccine clinics were a little bit lower just because of the summer months, and they had their regular home visits, and their blood pressure clinics continued, but a little lower numbers again because of summer vacations. And our next meeting, unless there's any questions, is October 9th.
Don't see any. Thank you, Ms. McFarland. Next, we have capital improvements. Ms. Sullivan Weiske.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Next is OKI. OKI Executive Board did meet on September 11th, 25. There was discussion about the recertification for the transportation bill for next year. That's at the federal level, which a lot of the funding comes through, back to Springdale, for example, comes through that. OKI did share that we are well positioned for prioritization and pass through of those dollars. We're not expecting significant delays. And the prioritize, and the recertification of transportation bill looks like it's tracking well. But as always, anything that happens at that level can be hit or miss. Just depends on what the winds are like when that comes up for a vote. But in terms of OKI, we're doing everything we can. The OKI did add about $14 million added to the resurfacing projects. I mentioned this at a previous meeting where, OKI did start allowing for small grants for resurfacing projects on their own. They did add money for July start dates, so things that are ready to go will start getting funding very quickly. And then the last thing I wanted to share is the federal certification process for our MPO did complete. This is almost like the federal level audit of the organization that you would see. OKI was recognized as having the planning processes that complies with the spirit and intent of all federal statutes. And it was actually singled out for six practices that receive commendations for nationwide best practices. These are things like outreach tools, public involvement, the planning process itself, and the use of data like GIS tools. Where 30, there's more than 30 tools online that I've shared over time where people can understand better what's happening in their city. So things like demographics, flow rates, things like that, that help businesses compete in our region. We're a model organization that we're a part of for that nationwide, which is good, and it shows that the value of working together, what that does. So our MPO works really well together, and we're a part of that. So that's all I wanted to share on that, unless there's any questions. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Next, we have the mayor's report. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, letters are going to be going out to selected residents from the city in the next few weeks regarding a tree planting program. So Public Works has identified some areas in the public right of way that are adjacent to residents' property where it would be a great opportunity to have a new tree planting. If someone receives a letter, again, it's not going to be everybody, but if you receive a letter and you do not want a tree planted there, there is an opportunity, and the letter will indicate that you can opt out by calling the Public Works Department and say, "No, thank you. Don't place a tree there." Otherwise, trees will, will start to be planted. Also, I want to commend our police color guard who were featured in presenting the colors and the flag on September 13th at the FC Cincinnati game. They did an outstanding job. We were just commenting, we didn't know they were going to be down there, but they were there front and center and in front of everybody, and I think because of them, FC Cincinnati had a last-second victory against Nashville and qualified for the playoffs. And lastly, as we talked about before, on September 8th, we had a ribbon cutting for the Ross Park rejuvenation project that Alice Cardona, who was here in our last meeting, did. It was a great event. Also, she'll be featured on a segment that we've been doing called "What's Going Down the Dale." You can see it on ICRC when that gets completed. We also put them on our website and on Facebook as well. With that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one question on the tree planting. Do we know what type of trees we're planning to plant in that area, or is that coming in the letter?
So the, the, the letter's going to indicate that they have selected, quote, "appropriate tree species" that are native or well-suited to our local climate requiring minimal maintenance once established.
All right.
So if you're asking for the specific species, no, I don't have that.
I did. Two or three.
It's a, there'll be a few that they'll choose from depending on the situation. All right. I just know in the past, we've had a lot of discussion about that. I didn't know if we had settled on a standard for our, I assume it's not going to be the Bradford pear, though.
No pears.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the administrator's report. Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick updates. At the end of August, Chief Butler was asked by the U.S. Secret Service to participate in a promotional panel. They flew him out to Washington, D.C., where he was there for about two and a half days, conducting assessments for the United States Secret Service for their promotional process for the position of captain. So honored to have Chief Butler represent Springdale and be asked by the Secret Service to participate in that. We have a finance officer tax commissioner second interview scheduled for tomorrow, so that is progressing. We will keep you updated as that evolves. We have one candidate coming back for a second interview, so we'll keep you posted. Quick Rita update, just by way of a couple of questions that were asked last meeting, both by council members and the, the members of the audience that were, came up for communications from the audience. One of the questions was this percentage, this kind of floating percentage, and what that looks like. And that's a, a percentage based on operating costs, and also the, the amount of collections and the number of collections. So it's a quantity and quantity. And then with the, they tell me that with about 95% certainty, their finance department kind of drills down on those numbers, so they're pretty certain. One of the other variables is their total operating costs for Rita, so the more organizations that are within Rita, those costs are shared amongst all, all agencies. Another question I was asked by a member of the audience was their frequency of payment, and we did confirm that that was twice a month, mid-month and end of month, and those, those come into the, to the city coffers. And then the contract commitment, they don't lock you in, but the only thing that they ask is you remain for consistency for that tax year. So by July 1st of, of any given year, we can provide them notice that we discontinue their service effective December 31st, so that the whole tax year stays in place for, for them, and that we would pick up for the following tax year. I think that makes a cleaner break as well, so. And last on my list, the Chamberlain Park Bridge on the Marwood side of the park should be open hopefully in the next 10 to 14 days. Our Parks Department has made some concrete repairs over there to the bridge, so they're allowing it to, to cure and to also remove some, some debris that's in the tunnel there. So hopefully that'll all get remedied here soon, and that side of the park will be open back up. So, and that is the end of my report.
Don't see any questions. Thank you, Mr. Yule. Next, we have the law director's report. Mr. Brown.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Engineers' report, Mr. Riggs.
Thank you. Yeah, so Northland Boulevard is, is moving along. Probably noticed that they're starting to work in the median now. They're putting in the, the hardscape, the, the large landscaping stone, so this is the exciting part. You'll start to really see the aesthetics come through. That's, that's the big part of the, really the intent behind the design, so that's, that's exciting. The contractor's looking to switch to phase three maintenance of traffic, so that means they're going, both sides of the roads are going to be open, and they're going to close the inside lane, so they continue working on the landscaping in the median. That's expected to happen in early October, at least the last I heard, so. We're, and that's probably going to stay that way throughout the winter months and then going into spring while they wrap up the landscaping. The East Kemper Road Improvement Phase 1, we're looking to have 75% plans back to the utilities pretty much at the end of this month. The Northland Kemper Intersection Realignment and Shared Use Path, we submitted our feasibility study to ODOT on August 21st. I know they're still reviewing it. They have several groups within ODOT that look at it, their area specialty, like individually, then they come together and we get all the comments back at once, so we're waiting on that to be completed. Then the Springdale Industrial Park and Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project, that was awarded last, last meeting to HUSAC Paving and Excavating. We had a pre-con, pre-construction meeting on September 2nd, and there should be getting started work by the end of the month, if, haven't already. I haven't reached out to them in a while, so. And that's all I have.
Don't see any questions. Thank you, Mr. Riggs. All right, next, we have the rental program committee. Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Next, the urban farming special committee. Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
And then finally, the zoning code revision committee. Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. The zoning code revision committee met September 9th at 2:00 PM in a meeting room adjacent to these chambers with attendees including city staff, representatives from McBride, Dale Clarion, the planning commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. The committee discussed areas of current zoning code that require evaluation, along with potential improvements to enhance the usability and accessibility of the document. A list of proposed code changes will be prepared ahead of the next meeting, which is scheduled to take place in the next, in a few coming weeks. That's all I have.
Glad to see that committee's kicked off. It's important work.
Thank you.
I don't see any questions. All right, that ends committee and official reports. Next, we'll move on to communications. Ms. Boggs, are there any communications for council this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. No communications.
Next, we'll move on to communications in the audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address council for any reason. Simply come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you'd have up to five minutes to address council. At this point, the floor is now open for communications from the audience. Second call, third and final call. All right, I'm closing communications in the audience, and we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up, we have ordinance number 39, 2025. This is a second reading, and there will be a public hearing. How we've done this in the past is how we'll do it again this evening. We'll do the reading once, and then I'll open the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have deliberations, and then take action. All right, so Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 39, 2025, an ordinance amending section 153 dot 252 F6C and creating section 153 dot 252 F6D of the Springdale Code of Ordinances regulating the keeping of bees in residential areas. Whereas section 153 dot 252 F6C of the Springdale Code of Ordinances regulates the keeping of bees in residential areas and, whereas council seeks to revise the regulations regarding the keeping of bees in residential areas of the city and, whereas council held a public hearing regarding this amendment on September 17th, 2025, and planning commission has reviewed the matter and recommended approval. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that section 153 dot 252 F6C of the Springdale Code of Ordinances shall be amended in relevant part to remove references to bees as follows. F6C husbandry of fowl and rabbits shall be regulated as follows. One, fowl and rabbits may be kept, may be raised or kept for a residence owner's use on a lot of not less than three acres of area. Two, the structure containing such use shall be located not less than 100 feet from all adjacent residential lot lines. Section 2, that section 153 dot 252 F6D of the Springdale Code of Ordinances hereby adopted to establish new regulations regarding the keeping of bees in residential areas of the city in the form attached as Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference. Section 3, that this council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which result in informal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 4, that this ordinance shall be effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Counsel, as I mentioned at the start of this, this does require a public hearing, and at this point, I am opening the public hearing related to ordinance number 39, 2025. If anyone would like to come forward and speak on this topic, this is your opportunity. The floor is now open. Second call, third and final call. And I'm closing the public hearing related to ordinance number 39, 2025. Counsel, you've heard the second reading of ordinance number 39, 2025, and having had the public hearing, what is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank the chair of the committee, council member McFarland, for taking the leadership to get this thing in front of council. I think it's a great chance for the community to give residents more control over their own property while having a positive impact on the environment, and we can contribute to Alice Cardona's mission with that pollinator garden. So I'm really glad this is front of council, and I appreciate it.
Ms. Sullivan Weiske.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind everyone that this did come before planning commission twice, and it was voted unanimously to come before you guys. Thank you.
Still in deliberations. All right, I see none. Ms. Boggs, if you poll council on ordinance number 39, 2025.
Ms. Sullivan Weiske?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Ms. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 39, 2025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next, we'll move on to ordinance number 37, 2025. This is a second reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 37, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute an addendum to the current agreement between the City of Springdale and Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated. Whereas with the adoption of ordinance number 08, 2024, the City of Springdale, the city, entered into an agreement with Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated for the management, operation, and maintenance of the swim pools located at the Springdale Community Center, and, whereas with the adoption of ordinance number 51, 2024, the city, the city executed an addendum to the original agreement for an additional one-year term, and, whereas the city and Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated desire to continue their existing relationship by executing a new addendum to extend the agreement for an additional three years. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to execute an addendum to the current agreement with Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated for the management, operation, and maintenance of the swimming pools located at the Springdale Community Center, the addendum. A copy of the addendum is attached as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that the finance officer tax commissioner is hereby directed to pay Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated according to the fees and payment schedules set forth in the addendum. Section 3, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which result in informal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 4, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the second reading of ordinance number 37, 2025. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Boggs, if you poll council.
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Ms. Webster?
Aye.
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 Aye. Ordinance number 37, 2025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next, we'll move on to ordinance number 38, 2025. This is a second reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 38, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Rumki of Ohio Incorporated for waste collection and recycling services. Whereas the City of Springdale, the city participated in the 2025 Southwest Ohio Regional Refuge Consortium invitation to bid for the collection, transportation, and delivery for disposal or processing of residential solid waste and recyclable material, and, whereas Rumki of Ohio Incorporated was determined to be the best and most responsive bidder for waste collection and recycling services. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the bid of Rumki of Ohio Incorporated for waste collection and recycling services is determined to be the best and most responsive bid received and is hereby accepted. Section 2, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Rumki of Ohio Incorporated for waste collection and recycling services in the city according to the specifications set forth by the Southwest Ohio Regional Refuge Consortium, the agreement. A copy of the agreement is attached as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section 3, that the finance officer tax commissioner is hereby directed to pay Rumki of Ohio Incorporated according to the rates set forth in accordance with the agreement. Section 4, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the second reading of Ordinance Number 38-2025, and can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? I just want to make one note is that I appreciate that Springdale continues to provide this service to residents. It's not something that all the communities do, and for those of us that have lived here most of our lives, it's easy to forget that this is something that makes Springdale special. More communities are pushing these costs onto the residents directly. They may negotiate rates, but a lot of them get a Rumpke bill every month, but that's something that's included with your services here, and I think it's important to note that when it happens. So, thank you for keeping this as part of our tax base. All right, and with that, Ms. Boggs, if you poll council?
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Ms. Sullivan-Weskey?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Ms. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance Number 38-2025 passes with seven affirmative votes, and Mr. Mayor Hawkins, did you have something to add to that?
I, I was just going to say, a, along those lines, you can't go and get these kinds of rates by yourself. We've had folks that have asked that question, so we're fortunate to do what we're doing.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we'll move on to Ordinance Number 40-2025. This is a first reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance Number 40-2025, an ordinance establishing and implementing a program to charge mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the City of Springdale Fire Department. Whereas the annual, annual volume of emergency and non-emergency incident responses continues to rise, and evolving environmental protection and homeland security requirements related to equipment and training impose increasing operational demands on fire department services and whereas the City of Springdale, the city has explored various strategies to sustain, sustain high-quality emergency and non-emergency services, service capabilities provided by the Springdale Fire Department amid rising service demands, recognizing that effective response efforts reduce incident-related costs for insurers, businesses, and individuals while saving lives, lives and minimizing property and environmental damage and whereas the city desires to implement a fair and equitable procedure by which to collect mitigation rates for emergency and non-emergency services and establish a billing system in accordance with applicable laws, regulations, and guidelines. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the city hereby establishes the mitigation fees shall be, the city hereby establishes that mitigation fees shall be charged by the city for the delivery of emergency and non-emergency services by the Springdale Fire Department for personnel, supplies, and equipment deployed and utilized at the scene of emergency and non-emergency incidents as set forth in the attached Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference, mitigation fees. Section 2, that the mitigation, that the mitigation fees to be charged by the city for the delivery of emergency and non-emergency services by the Springdale Fire Department shall be based on actual costs of the services and that which is usual, customary, and reasonable, which may include any services, personnel, supplies, and equipment. Section 3, that the mitigation fees may be increased annually based on the annual percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index, CPI, as developed by the Bureau of Labor Statistics of the U.S. Department of Labor. Mitigation fee adjustments may be reviewed and adjusted by the mayor and city administrator on the anniversary date of the passage of this ordinance to keep the city's cost recovery program in conformity with increasing operating expenses. Section 4, that a claim for the recovery of mitigation fees shall be filed to the responsible parties through their insurance carrier, and in certain circumstances, the responsible parties will be billed directly. Section 5, that the city may adopt rules or regulations, and from time to time may amend, revoke, or add rules and regulations not inconsistent with this ordinance related to charging or billing of mitigation fees or procedures for the collection thereof. Section 6, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 7, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, this was the first reading of Ordinance Number 40-2025. Are there any questions or discussion this evening? All right, see none. We will see this again at our next meeting. And lastly, in ordinances, we have Ordinance Number 41-2025. This is another first reading. Mr. Jacobs.
Ordinance Number 41-2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Fire Recovery USA LLC for billing services associated with the recovery of mitigation fees charged by the City of Springdale for emergency and non-emergency services performed by, by the Springdale Fire Department. Whereas the City of Springdale, the city has established mitigation fees to be charged associated with emergency and non-emergency services provided by the Springdale Fire Department and whereas the city desires to enter into an agreement with Fire Recovery USA LLC association, associated with the collection of the fees to be charged by the city for emergency and non-emergency services performed by the Springdale Fire Department. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Fire Recovery USA LLC for the performance of billing services to collect mitigation fees for emergency and non-emergency services performed by the Springdale Fire Department, the agreement. A copy of the agreement is attached as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, this was the first reading of Ordinance Number 41-2025. Any questions or discussion this evening? Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. With these, these two ordinances, I just want to share that there are several neighboring agencies that do follow this practice as well. Those include Colrain Township, Springfield Township, Harrison, Liberty Township in Butler County, and Glendale's been doing this for about six or seven years. Also, Chief Stanley will be here for the proclamation on October, our next meeting, October 1st, so if you have any other questions, he'll have some more details he can provide and probably better answer some of those questions as well.
And with that, we finish ordinances and resolutions. We'll move on to the next item. Ms. Sullivan-Weskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for executive session under Article 2D1 of Springdale Charter to discuss economic development issues.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? We're not expecting any action out of this. All right, Ms. Boggs, will you please poll council and move into executive session?
Ms. Sullivan-Weskey?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Webster?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. We are in executive session. We will return.[1052.73]
We're going to continue with the agenda. Next up on the agenda is old business. Is there any old business anyone on council would like to bring forward? Seeing none, next on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business anyone on council would like to bring forward? Seeing none, next is meetings and announcements. Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rental Committee will be meeting on October 2nd, 2 o'clock, in the caucus room in the back.
Ms. Sullivan-Lyska.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission will meet in these chambers on November 11th at 7:00 p.m.
Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. The BZA meeting scheduled for the 23rd of this month has been canceled.
All right, seeing no more lights, we'll move on. Next, we have communications in the audience. This is the second. Opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address council for any reason, simply come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to address council. At this point, communications in the audience is now open. Second call, third and final call. And I'm closing communications in the audience. Next, we'll move on to a recap of legislative items and legislation still in development. Mr. Jacobs.
Counsel, as you review your legislative summary, item one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute an addendum to the current agreement between the City of Springdale and Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated was addressed by ordinance 37-2025, receiving a second reading and seven affirmative votes. Item two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Rumpke of Ohio Incorporated for waste collection and recycling services was addressed by ordinance number 38-2025, receiving a second reading and seven affirmative votes. Item three, an ordinance amending section 153.252-F6C and creating section 153.252-F6D of the Springdale Code of Ordinances regulating the keeping of bees in residential areas was addressed by ordinance number 39-2025, receiving a second reading and seven affirmative votes. Item four, an ordinance establishing and implementing a program to charge mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the Springdale Fire Department was addressed by ordinance number 40-2025, receiving a first reading. Item five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Fire Recovery USA LLC for building services associated with recovery of mitigation fees charged by the City of Springdale for emergency and non-emergency services performed by the Springdale Fire Department was addressed by ordinance number 41-2025, also receiving a first reading. Item six, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor will be before council at our October 1st meeting, and that's all I have unless administration has anything else.
Counsel, anything else? All right, then all that's left before us this evening is item 17.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned, thank you, everyone.